Talk into the microphone.
Is it karaoke night?
It's 9:30 a.m. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Supervisor Bishop, if you will entertain the invocation and the pledge of allegiance from Supervisor Moss.
Thank you.
Please rise.
Thank you Supervisor Watson. If you'll join me in a moment of prayer. Heavenly Father, we come to you today to give your honor and praise. We thank you for our great country and we ask your divine wisdom for all of our leaders here today. May we be given the wisdom and the courage and the decisions that we'll be making today. We ask that you guide and direct our meeting so that it's full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. We thank you for the accomplishments of reaching our goals and we pray these things in your mighty name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the fudge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The Board of Supervisors may, by motion, recess into an executive session to receive legal advice from the board's attorney on any item contained in this agenda pursuant to the Arizona Revised Statutes 38-431A, 3, and 4. Now we'll proceed for motion and action to call for an executive session to be held July 3rd, 2017, at 9:00 a.m. for the discussion consultation with legal counsel in accordance with the ARS 38-431 portions A, 3, and 4 to discuss items noticed on the agenda with an asterisk. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Mr. Esplund, do we have any items pending or contemplated litigation claims and demands?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Committee and/or legislative reports. We'll start with Supervisor Johnson in Lake Cabasou City.
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Bishop?
Yes, I wanted to report that last Thursday, June the 6th, Supervisor Watson and myself and invited guests were at the Mojave County Detention Facility Commander at the invitation of Captain Don Bischoff. We were given a enlightening tour of the facility, which included administrative offices, the booking floor, holding cells, various pods, as well as juvenile pods, fugitives and warrants division classifications, commissary, medical, and of course, a rather large kitchen. This was very interesting to me, even though I booked people into the jail in my past career, I never realized the massive responsibility that the jail commander has. And we were invited to sample an inmate dinner while we were there touring the kitchen, and that consisted of rice with chicken vegetables, a dinner roll, and flavored sugared popcorn for dessert, and some kind of a drink that was like Kool-Aid. So we did our partake in that, and it was okay. The building is very large, it's very complex, and we came away with a new understanding of the life of a correctional officer and the amount of maintenance required to keep everything working smooth over there. And at this time, I'd like to challenge my fellow supervisors to take that tour because even though I've spent years in law enforcement, I really didn't have a grasp for the enormity of it all. So it's very, very interesting, and they earn their money over there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is my second time to tour the jail. First time I was not able to appreciate their epicurean delight for dinner, but it was a great presentation. We should be very proud of Commander Don Bischoff and what he's able to do over there. Supervisor Angus?
Thank you. I do have a report. Last week, I attended the Mojave County Water Authority. I'm a new member. This was only my second meeting, but there's an issue that has been brought to our attention, and I've been asked to speak about it from the lawyer for the water authority, Maureen George. It's about a Colorado River transfer of water from Quartzsite. And the town of Quartzsite has a fourth priority Colorado River allocation of 1,070 acre feet, which has never been put to use. The town has entered into a long-term lease, which, given its terms, MCWA considers effectively a permanent transfer of that allocation to the Central Arizona Water Conservation District for use in Central Arizona by the Central Arizona Groundwater Replenishment District. The MCWA is very concerned about this lease and has directed its legal counsel to file objections during both the state and federal processes necessary to approve the transfer of the Quartzsite allocation to CAWCD. There are a number of areas of concern, but the primary concern is the transfer of fourth priority Colorado River water out of the Colorado mainstream communities to Central Arizona. As part of the negotiations leading to the approval of what was to become the Central Arizona Project, Arizona officials wisely and consistent with prudent water management recognizing that the on-river communities within what is now the accounting surface, with the exception of the Yuma area, which has pre-existing contracts, but no source of water other than the Colorado River, set aside 10%, approximately 165,000 acre feet of Arizona's available Colorado River allocation for future growth along the mainstream. The Quartzsite allocation falls within that 10% set aside. MCWA, since its inception 20 years ago, has consistently objected to any movement of that 10% set aside to Central Arizona and will continue to do so. This is a critical issue. If this transfer is approved, it opens the door to continual raids on rural Arizona's Colorado River allocations. State and federal studies have identified the on-river communities as hotspots where additional water will be needed. It is bad public policy to move water away from these areas, particularly water specifically set aside for future growth along the river. MCWA is urging all of Mojave County's elected officials, local, state, and federal, its business leaders, and residents to oppose this raid on rural Arizona's resources. CAGRD has other options available to it within Central Arizona and should not be permitted to diversify its portfolio at the risk of Arizona's mainstream communities. She also sent some backup material, the lease agreement itself, I'm going to send it to Mike and have him send it to the rest of the board, and ask administration to put together a resolution for our next meeting to send along. And hopefully, other elected boards will be talking about this. She said the best thing is to keep talking about it, and there'll be public hearings. We have standing on this one, so it makes it a little easier, but she said it's that urgent. So, thank you.
Very good. Very good report. Thank you. Supervisor Moss?
I would also echo Supervisor Angus's comments. I think we need the resolution and maybe also consider other possible action at a scheduled board meeting. This is, again, we've always predicted this happening, and it seems like it's going to be happening. On the good news, because this is going to be a bad news day, I think, overall, and that's, the water is bad news. For those of you who don't know, I'm on the Arizona Water Banking Authority, and there's a website people can check out. It's the Upper Colorado Basin Snowpack for the past seven years. Currently, the snowpack, which determines the water coming through into the Colorado River, which is what we and CAP and others use, is currently sitting at 210% of average. So that is an enormously good wet year for us, and it will be beneficial going down the line, mostly to CAP, but, you know, to us too, a little bit.
Right. Got a question. Will that water be stored in Lake Powell or Lake Mead?
That is decided by the Bureau of Reclamation and others, and I do not know yet.
Okay. I have seen Lake Mead rise somewhat over the last three or four months.
I've seen the river rise the last three or four months. I think they're letting some of it flow through, but we'll see. It looks good, though.
Thank you very much for all the reports. County administrators report.
I have no report today, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Approval of the May 15th, 2017, Board of Supervisors' regular meeting minutes.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve. Discussion? There being none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to call to the public. Those wishing to address the board at the call of the public regarding matters not on the board agenda must fill out and submit to the clerk a call of the public request to speak form located in the back of the room prior to the meeting. Action taken as a result of the public comments will be limited to responding to criticism, criticism, referral to staff, and placing a matter on a future agenda. Comments are restricted to items not on the regular agenda, with the exception of the consent agenda, and must relate to matters within the jurisdiction of the board. The first person that had signed up this morning. Armin Stange?
Yes.
Yes, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Armin Stange, 4321 South Calvary Road in Fort Mojave, Arizona. We have problems in our neighborhood in Leclerc Acres. We have drug deals going on. We have cars dismantled in the neighborhood, and nobody really is cleaning up there. And what I understand is our property taxes are supposed to be raised for what kind of a reason when our neighborhood is going down the drain. And, you know, we are supposed to have single-family residences there on one acre plus. There is more than three properties what have two or three houses or trailers on their properties and renting them out. It would be really nice if the Board of Supervisors and the county is doing something about it. And then my last question is, why don't we have meetings in the evening so everybody can attend?
Be cooler, wouldn't it?
Yep, that would be great, you know, or sometimes mix it up, have a meeting in Bullhead at the Hot Library.
We can refer one of your items to staff. Be glad to.
Okay. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next person to speak is Marjorie Karish?
Karish.
Karish?
Good morning, Supervisors. My concerns are...
Please state your name and address for the record.
Marjorie Karish, 4345 South Calvary Road in Fort Mojave. I live in Leclerc Acres. A small group of us came up this morning from Fort Mojave. I've lived there 37 years, and I've never... Our neighborhood is just going downhill. And I remember when I first moved there in the 80s that they wouldn't even let a truck driver park his big rig near his home or at his home. Now, you could just almost do anything you want. It's like a big free-for-all. I don't know who's in charge out there, but I get very emotional about it. I'm a widow, and I have a back lot, and I'm scared to be there because of these idiots living in this area, drug dealers. And then, since I have a back lot, when I'm going to it, I have to pass by this rental mobile that must be 10, 20 people living in there. And since when can you live in a motorhome parked against the fence, living in a motorhome? We have wells out there, and that concerns me. And besides that, my safety. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll refer your item to our staff and also the sheriff. Mr. Robinson?
Steve Robinson, 3439 North Bowie Road in Golden Valley. I want to address simply one issue right now, and the first gentleman that spoke mentioned it as well. It is, I have talked to dozens of people across the county, and I've looked at the three cities, all of them having evening meetings. Whether it's summertime or wintertime, it would be very, very beneficial for more people who work during the day to have a chance to attend the board meetings. One of the objection I've heard from about having evening meetings is overtime expense. Well, since virtually every department soup head is on a salary and is exempt from overtime restrictions, the only people that would have to be paid overtime if they didn't take other time off is janitors or someone working in the audio/video room. So I really would encourage you to put that on to discuss and have it considered, because I've talked to many people, and maybe they'll be coming in future meetings to repeat what I'm asking you to look at now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Next person to speak is Royanne Ortiz.
Hello Supervisors and staff. My name is Royanne Ortiz, and I live at...
Please state your name and address for the record.
I live at 1550 Mona Vista in Bullhead City. And I'm here to ask the board to consider maybe having night meetings on a regular basis, but at least for public hearings on the budget, that you should have at least one of those public meetings in the evening so that people who are actually paying these taxes and working would be able to attend and give you feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ortiz. Okay. That is call to the public. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. Carry. We'll accept it.
Eva Corbett, Bullhead City, 2426 Topanga Drive. I just noticed, you know, I've been coming for a while now, and I noticed that Buster Johnson usually isn't here in person, and I would like to request that he attend the next meeting, please. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to the consent agenda, items 5 through 39. Following items listed under the consent agenda will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion with no separate discussion of said items unless a board member shall request. In that event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. So we will start with Supervisor Johnson. Any items to remove?
None, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Angus?
Nothing this morning.
Supervisor Moss?
Number 15.
15. Supervisor Bishop?
Number 6.
Number 6. Okay, we have a motion for the consent agenda with the exceptions of items 6 and 15.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 6.
Chairman Watson, I would just like a little explanation from Development Services as to the necessity of a county vehicle for this employee. I don't believe it's been provided in the past, so I just need some justification. Thank you.
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Bishop, if I may, the reason for adding the vehicle to this position is very frequently the chief building official will be called out to assist the sheriff's office on early morning raids or basically to go in and assist in determining whether a structure is habitable or safe for the inhabitants there. So the idea in providing a vehicle for this position would allow for the chief building official to be able to attend those early morning raids, some as early as 4:00 in the morning, leaving from his residence rather than coming in, getting a vehicle, and then going out to that residence.
How often does that happen?
It's, I'd say in the last month, we probably had, say, four or five within the last month that he's gone out and assisted with those raids.
And those are after-duty hours?
Typically, early morning, yeah. Some will be during the day, but there's, we had one down in Bullhead a couple weeks back that was as early as 4:00 in the morning that they were down there going through that, so. And if I may, the reason it's been added as part of this as well is during our negotiations, it was brought to my attention that it would be a benefit to this position to be able to do that. And in looking at it, it was brought up during the hiring negotiations, but in looking at it outside of that, it seemed to make good sense to me, which is why it was added.
Okay, I just hear a lot of comments from the public that, you know, we seem to be pretty lax on providing county vehicles to people that don't need them, so I want to be assured that this is a position that actually does need this vehicle for callouts, and I think I'd like to see the numbers of callouts for at least a year's period for this type of situation before I put my stamp on it.
Okay. I can provide... Supervisor Angus?
Did I hear you correctly? Did you say it was part of negotiations for employment that this position was promised a car before it was put in the budget?
No, sorry, Chairman Watson, Supervisor Angus, it was not promised at any point. It was requested during the negotiations for the employment, and at which point that's when I considered it and then brought it to you for approval.
I agree with Supervisor Bishop. I'd like to see some more justification, some numbers. So tell, just real quick, what are early morning raids?
Typically, drug-related raids. When the sheriff's office goes out to do a drug bust or something like that, they'll contact both our zoning department as well as our building department to come out, look at the property. Typically, once the bad actors have been secured and removed, they'll look at the property to see if it's reasonable to, or if it's necessary to remove power from the site and that type of thing. If it's not a habitable structure, if it's a danger to the residents there, then he'll make that assessment and...
And you say there are four to five of these a month?
He's had quite a few just here recently. I'll have to double-check those numbers, but yeah, that seems to be as many as that, yes.
I know there's been a couple raids in the Fort Mojave area recently, so it makes sense to me, but I have no problem continuing this for a couple weeks in order to get the data that Supervisor Bishop and Angus wants.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to continue until we decide where we are with the budget, whether or not we're going to have revenue to do these nice things, and if we vote for a zero increase in budgets, we may have to look at a lot of cuts. Let's put it off for a while and see where we go on the budget.
Carrie, I think Mike wants to...
And Mr. Chairman, I believe this particular motion has two parts. We're asking that, and one of the first part needs to be approved today. If I'm not mistaken, we're asking that the chief building official be hired in at a Step 9, Range 23, which is above my authority, so I request at least the board consider approving a portion of this motion today.
So it's a two-part motion, one to hire the employee and the second to add the vehicle?
Yes, sir.
All right, then I move that we hire the employee on the terms stated, with the exception of the vehicle, which should wait to the conclusion of the budget process.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Okay. We do have a motion and a second. Any continued discussion? My only comment is we also need to remember, this is the chief building official, and consider him also a part of a magnet force that he does on the side, plus his regular job, so I'll have to take that into consideration also, but that's my only comment. All right. Those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Item 15.
Supervisor, Chairman Watson, I only pulled this item for purposes of recusing myself from the vote and discussion.
Motion to approve item 15?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? There being none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Done pretty well on time. Okay, we'll go ahead and get into some of the public hearing. Just want to remind the audience this morning, the time's set at 11:00 a.m. for the open meeting law training by the Ombudsman's Office. So we'll take a break at 11:00 and take that training. We have a number of boards coming in, fire boards, school boards, those people. Okay, item number 40. I'll open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action regarding the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2017-064 for the acceptance of Old Pioneer Road from Old Highway 91 to North Logallis Avenue into the Mojave County Road Maintenance System and further direct the county engineer to file with the Board of Supervisors a report and map of the proposed roadway. Okay. I have no one signed up to speak to that item. Anyone on the DS wants to speak to that item?
I would say that I think considering our road issues, maybe not adding to our road system might be a good idea.
Well, can I explain a little bit?
Sure.
It was a portion that, it's not a very long portion, and I'll have Steve Latausky come up and explain it, because of an obstruction that was there that has now been removed. So can have Steve come up and...
Good morning, Chairman Watson, members of the board. This concerns a .41-mile section of Old Pioneer Road. The initial 1.1 miles, this is in the Beaver Dam area from County Route 1 on westward, was accepted by the board for regular maintenance in November 2016 as a hard-surface roadway. At the time that we received a petition, which actually represented a 1.5-mile roadway, staff did not recommend the last .41 miles of this roadway on premise that we saw certain roadside obstructions that really warranted a second look. The roadway traveled way is largely representative of the first 1.1 miles that was accepted for regular maintenance, and what happened was subsequent to the board action to accept the first 1.1 miles, staff has revisited that balance of .41 miles of roadway. While obstructions have not been removed, we have applied engineering judgment and practice to determine that those roadside obstructions are not an undue hazard to roadside traffic, and enclosed with your material is an engineering study sealed by your engineering manager to that effect.
Mr. Latausky, the applicants have also gotten that portion of the road up for acceptance with Millings, is that correct?
Supervisor, Chairman Watson, that is correct. The balance of the roadway that's being considered today is largely representative of that first 1.1 miles that was accepted in November.
Okay. Does that give you some more information?
It does, but I have one other question, and it doesn't change my mind, but did this go to the Transportation Commission for review?
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Moss, this represents a public petition for road maintenance. The public brought this roadway up to county standards at their own expense, and thus, a county highway petition was not filed. Therefore, the Transportation Commission was not involved.
I think you understand my position, though, by previous statements regarding the Transportation Commission, because we do have only limited funds. I have two objections only, Mr. Chairman, and it's nothing against the applicants, it's nothing against the public need for this road, but we're $8 to $9 million short every year in our HERF revenues in order to adequately maintain our roads. And I think it's, we're probably coming to the time where we need to stop accepting roads, period, into the county system until we get our revenue situation corrected. So I'll be voting against this and all our future road applications until we get this situation corrected.
Chairman Watson?
I can certainly understand your situation. I'd like you to go back into your memory. This road was brought up to spec by Mr. and Mrs. Schopman at their own expense of $18,000. Those were the applicants, but I understand where you're coming from.
I, I think they're great people, I think this is a good project, and we have eight to nine million dollars short, and so what we're doing is we're going to make it eight to nine million and plus just a little bit short, and I'm afraid we're getting into the spiral of a death of a thousand cuts.
I certainly understand. Supervisor Bishop?
I have a question. This is, this is to set a public hearing, am I correct, to, to look at this .41 section?
This is the public hearing, it's not been closed yet.
Okay, okay, that was, that was the backup material I was looking at, it was old material. Okay, so this is just a .41 section of a road that's been brought up to standards by the community members, is that correct?
Mr. Latausky?
Yes, this concerns just .41 miles, and while the motion actually does refer to setting a public hearing, this is agendized as a public hearing, so that may be a staff's error with regard to referencing.
This was set as public hearing at our previous meeting?
Okay.
And so in the backup, you're seeing the initial backup, the posting in the paper, and now this is the public hearing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve at this point then.
And I'll second that.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second.
Oh, yeah, close the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Close the public hearing, and now we can accept a motion.
Yeah. I make the motion to accept.
Feature motion, thank you.
And I'll second again.
We have a motion and a second for acceptance. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed?
Opposed.
For the record. Motion passed. Thank you, Steve. Now we move on to the regular agenda. Item number forty-one, discussion, possible action regarding in accordance with the provisions of Proposition 206, approve the addition of Policy 3.40, earn paid sick time to the personnel policies and procedures as stated herein. This has been continued by the board at their June 5th meeting 2017. Mr. Cunningham, thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Watson. This was carried forward because there were some concerns about the payout and carrying over of hours. Since it was carried over, we did a little bit more research, and the recommendations, or I should say the frequently asked questions was updated by the state, which took out the payout. So our new policy here just states that there's, you can earn and only use 40 hours in any given year. So if you have 40 hours at the end of the year, you can carry it over, but no more than 40 hours can be carried over each and every year, and there will be no cash out, and you can only use the 40 hours. Whether you have 80 hours in the bank or not, you can only use 40 hours under this plan.
Okay. Thank you very much for the research and the.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item forty-one, and thank you, Mr. Cunningham.
Can I just ask a quick question, please?
Certainly.
So are you saying that since two weeks ago, the state has taken it out?
If, if you look at the frequently asked questions when we first brought this up, the section said that we would have to pay out anything we didn't carry over. Then when I was talking with the attorney, Esplin, we went back and looked at it, and that part has changed, because before it was on, on page 15 of the frequently asked questions, now it's on page 20, and yes, they did take that piece out.
Wow, okay.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carried unanimously. Item number forty-two, Ryan Esplin, civil deputy county attorney, discussion, possible action, discussion with the attorney of the public body pursuant to ARS 38-431, A3 and 4, to consider the county's position on negotiations and strategies regarding the transwestern pipeline versus the Department of Revenue Tax Evaluation Appeals in 093, TX 2016-00951, and to provide instructions to its attorneys on the subject. Mr. Esplin?
No further action needs to be taken, it's already been taken in executive, no, no action was taken.
At this meeting?
Exactly.
Very good. Item number forty-three, Lester Johnson, Mojave County Supervisor, District 3, discussion, possible action, the adoption of a proclamation naming June 24, 2017, as free and accepted Mason's Day in Mojave County, Arizona, to be signed by the chairman of the board.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Supervisor Johnson, any comments?
None at all, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item number forty-four. Supervisor Moss, discussion, possible action, request staff to reevaluate the changes in the sheriff's department overtime rules and report to the board on their findings. Supervisor Moss?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there anyone signed up to speak on this? I'll give you my background, and if there's anyone, they can add to it. But the, my understanding is that recently the finance department has changed the overtime rules, so a sheriff which has taken paid time off and is with his family, or her family, and is out of town or on vacation, used to get overtime if they were called back in order to provide services. For example, there's some sheriff deputies who are the only one with a specific expertise, and they were provided overtime in order to encourage them to come back. That rule was changed, it may be that that rule is perfectly legal, but we place ourselves in a position where deputies no longer have an incentive to interrupt their family vacation, their family time, to come back, to apply their specific expertise on a particular crime scene, because we're saying, no, you're not going to get overtime, you're going to come back, you're going to work your regular hours, and if you're in Disney World or Disneyland or wherever it is with your family, we need you, come there, come back. And now they have an incentive to say no, which means, a financial incentive to say no, which means even though it may be illegal, we may have instituted inadvertently bad policy when it comes to providing law enforcement services to our public. That's my understanding of the situation. I know I've talked to Attorney Esplin about it briefly via email, and I just made, made aware of the situation, I wanted to make the board aware of the situation, and if there's anyone who has a comment on it, because I think there are people signed up to speak, I'll let them fill in the gaps.
Fill in the gaps, very good, okay. We do have a number of people that have signed up, at least, at least one. Brad Wrightout?
Morning, Mr. Wrightout? Good morning. For the record, Brad Wrightout, I live in Lake Havasu, 228 Leonard Lane, Lake Havasu City. I also am an attorney, I represent the ASCOPS Union, they are composed of about 67 of our deputies. Today, I'm not here to threaten the board, there's just been some concerns that have brought to me, and I'm bringing it to the board, concerning some of the overtime rules. Some of the more veteran officers can remember this overtime policy, where if you were called out on vacation, let's just call it eight hours in the middle of the vacation, you get overtime for that plus your vacation. The rules have changed where if you get called out in the middle of your vacation, you get that straight time now. The other sort of issues that, that this overtime sort of inadvertently caused is if, say, officers that, recently we had a boating accident in the Havasu, we have four officers that work boats, they're qualified, you have to have special certifications, you have to go through hours of classes, you can't, I just can't, even though I operate a boat, I can't go out there and search, they have to use specialized equipment. So each of these officers had to spend time out there, so my kids playing on the beach didn't have to find a dead body on them Monday morning. They spent hours and hours there. Say those officers, the next day, they, they spent 24 straight hours working, because that happens, the next day they're too tired to work, because they're not robots. If they call up PTO for that safety time, so that they can safely not run someone over with their boat, that, now they have, there's, the time that they were called out is now sort of reduced, so they get eight hours of the time that they were out for the 24 hours searching for this body are now reduced, because they took PTO, they're penalized, so that's a concern. So there's a safety concern, a disincentive which Supervisor Moss brought up. There's also a loss of PTO time that they, they get, because if they're not going to, if they feel like they can't take PTO because they're going to lose overtime, they feel that basically they're going to overrun their PTO, and they end up losing it when, when they go over 900 hours. So basically, how many of those 67 officers that I'm here to talk about today? Just about all of them. We're talking canines, we're talking magnet, people on the Arizona Strip, tactical boats, search and rescue and detectives, they all get called out. So it's affecting a majority of the workforce at the sheriff's department. Again, we're not, they're not here to threaten, they're not here to say they're not going to do their job, they just want what's been done for the last 30 years and to be heard about their concerns. So, yeah, they just, they're just concerned about the loss of pay, so each one of them has taken a loss of pay in the last year since this policy has, has changed, so in effect, this new policy has given each one of these officers, the majority of those 67 officers that, that I'm here to talk for, a, a pay cut over the last year. So that disincentive is, it's created a, a critical office that has a critical need in the department, more critical, more of an incentive, and, and again, they're not going to slow down, they're not going to do the old, my dad used to work at a union, call-off, that's not what they're saying. But what you incentivize is when another department comes and goes, hey, our overtime, you guys get totally jerked around on that overtime, why don't you come and work for Bullhead or Havasu or City of Kingman? They're more likely to say yes, and that's, that's the issue that I think the ASCOPS members are concerned about, so we'd like to bring that to the board.
Supervisor?
Why, why was the policy changed, it was changed last year? Is that what I'm understanding?
I think that the PTO change was.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, I just wanted to make a couple clarifications. You know, when we changed the entire personnel policy, we took a look at the PTO policy, and one of the things that Mr. Wrightout stated was, was incorrect. The county actually doesn't have to pay any additional monies when somebody's called back, but what we want to do in our policy is, is, let's say in the road department, if we have a snow up on the Walupis, we want a policy that people will be standing in line to want to go up there and work and get the extra pay for, for that type of work because of the extra effort that, that they have to, that it entails for them to come back to work. So what the PTO callback policy actually states is that an employee who is called back to work in a non-scheduled or emergency situation, and who returns to work after having otherwise completed their shift, shall be compensated at a rate of one and one-half times that employee's regular hourly rate or compensatory time. So whether that employee is scheduled to work that week, or if they're scheduled for PTO, if they get called back, they get 1.5 times their rate. What this gentleman is requesting is they get 1.5 times their rate, plus they get an extra eight hours for having scheduled PTO, and that's not something that we agree with, administration agrees with, and it's not something that our attorney believes that we're obligated to pay those employees.
Was there a change in the system? Did they previously have the rights that you described, and was it changed last year?
When I, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Moss, this particular policy was approved by the board when you approved the personnel policy, it hasn't changed, we didn't change anything. It did come to my attention, and I haven't verified this with the sheriff, that they were handling PTO differently, or they may have been handling PTO differently than what our personnel policy allows for, and that just came up recently after you agendized the item, it's not something that I had looked at previously.
Okay, so it's possibly what the sheriff's department, as it impacted them, is correct, there has been a change which they're concerned about.
That's possible.
It occurs to me that we need, we should probably have the sheriff's office engage with the administration to get this thrashed out and come back to the board with a report and with some recommendations, both from the sheriff and from the administration on this issue, because it also occurs to me, we are under the gun, I don't know what's going to happen budget-wise today, and we're under the gun with, what, 79 officers, and 67 of them are affected by this change, and we have created, we may have, I'll stress the word "may have," created yet another disincent and disincentive to remain in the Mojave County Sheriff's Office. And I think we need to get to the bottom of that situation, one way or the other, not prejudging it, what I'm saying is we need to look at it and get this thing, all stakeholders at the table, and bring it back to the board. And so I'd make a motion that we continue this item until such time as the sheriff and the administration can each get together, discuss this, and bring back a report to the board.
Great. Very good. Set in the form of a motion?
It is.
We have a motion and a second to bring it back, and we need to put a.
I would let the sheriff and the county administrator work that out, I don't want to tell them how fast they must work.
Okay, but we probably need to.
Within 60 days?
60 days?
I'll add to my motion, within 60 days, and if they need more time, just ask for it.
Sure, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Johnson?
Can we make, they should be all departments, because it is a federal law that dictates this, so we got to make sure that whatever we do for one, we do for all.
Good point. Good point. So we have a motion and a second, further discussion?
I just have a, a brief comment. I, I think in the future, we need to take a look at the entire PTO program, we made some changes, and I think it's, it's heard as far as our recruiting and our ability to retain employees, so I, I will support this coming back, but I'd also in the future like to look at PTO again.
Okay, therefore, no further discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. All right, item number forty-five, discussion, possible action regarding the review of the county's debt and long-term liabilities. I think I might have the wrong. Okay. And different funding mechanisms to address the obligations. What I'm bringing forth this morning is A, adoption of the Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2007-073, adopting and levying a one-quarter of one cent county general excise tax on those people engaging and continuing in the county in a business taxed under Chapter Five, Article One, Section 42-5352, to be used exclusively for paying PRS, PRS, and the EORP unfunded pension liabilities, retirement refunds of eligible members, recurring employee contribution rates, and any associated expenses incurred as a result of the Arizona Supreme Court decisions. And I think what I'd like to do is separate these two and just have an action on, on portion A. So with that, I'll open it for the discussion, we have several people that would like to speak to the item. So let those speakers, okay? Okay, first to speak on the issue would be Royanne Ortiz.
Supervisors and staff, my name is Royanne Ortiz, I live at 1550 Monovista, Bullhead City. I'm here to speak in favor of levying a sales tax to solve the problem with the sheriff in lieu of a property tax. I just think it's a more fair way of doing it rather than burdening the property owners with an additional tax that will go on for who knows how long. with an additional tax that will go on for who knows how long. And I guess that's it for me, I'm in favor of that, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ortiz.
Mr. Chairman, Eva Corbett, Bullhead City, 2426 Topanga Drive, in the progressive city of Bullhead City. Anyway, I'm a bit confused, I don't understand what SPRS, SP, PSRPS is.
Public Safety Retirement Pension System, law enforcement essentially.
Okay, so we're not talking about money to go for the Sheriff's Department?
No ma'am, this is dedicated solely for the liability concerning the two pensions.
Okay, so that would be covered at another time then?
That would be covered later, later today.
Okay, 'cause that's what I'm in favor of, thank you.
Thank you.
Stephen Robinson, address unchanged. The pest, the pension deficit is a very recent problem and certainly really needs to be addressed, but we don't even know the final numbers at this time. There's still the ASRS, the, and other, other issues. So I think it's kind of premature to be setting up a sales tax to address a problem when we don't know the full cost. By contrast, the pay and the shortage of the county Sheriff's Department and the lack of deputies has been a longstanding problem that has been ignored for decades. It's frustrating because that's one of the first prime priorities of the county government is public safety. And if, and it, I'm not the first one to speak about it, nor will I be the last one, but I think that before you rush into this, for two reasons, you need to look, first, what is the issues of the total cost of the pension? And secondly, look at other issues that need to be addressed. Not everybody is rushing into finance payment of the debt, most are not even, most cities and counties are not even addressing it at this point. It's nice that we're being proactive. Thirdly, there is a, a number of funds, that there's excessive amounts of cash in those funds. And everybody says, oh no, we need all this money. When you tax the people, raise the taxes, and, and there's more money that's built into these funds, like 300% of the car purchase requirements every year, there's three times as much as, as needed, and it wants to be get back up to four times as much or six times as much. You need to really look, why do you need seven years worth of vehicle purchase money when we have a problem that's so seriously ahead of us? So I would oppose the tax strictly for the deficit of the pension. I would be in favor of the tax if you included providing some of support for the Sheriff's Department, because public safety is our number one concern as a county, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board of Supervisors. Here we are again...
Could we have your name and address for the record?
3908 Jamboi Way, Bullhead City. Here we are again in the dispute of debating and debating on this sales increase in our sales taxes or property taxes. The folks, the focus is the action and decision for, for this Board of Supervisors and I'm concerned. The question is to increase our county's tax sales and increase our community's property tax, which will be the greatest burden upon our citizens who live here, who live here. The calculations are simple and anyone that can add and subtract can see the solution. This is a simple equation and lets us, let us see in our minds the calculations of the one-quarter cent sales tax versus property tax of 25% increase per hundred, per property value, and this is my understanding, and I could be wrong, I don't know. An increase of a, a sales tax where everyone that comes in our county, whether they are vacationers, visitors, tourists, boat, water, sports, recreational, hiking, shooting or gambling in our Laughlin, Nevada, will be paying for the, paying this, since the sales taxes upon everyone that drives in, buys and utilizes any, anything, anything in our county. This issue has gone down the road several times and there's always a problem to get everyone an agreement or compromising a solution. So here's an option, the tax, property owners and the burden of them to accumulate taxes through our vacationers and boaters and recreational sporters, Laughlin, in Laughlin, Nevada, needed maintenance and repairs for our roads and connectors, road routes and infrastructures, we, which we all know that is needed and is at dire straits. Currently, the state does not recognize Mojave County as much since we are to identify as rural county. However, our population increases yearly and our county is getting closer to urban status, but Mojave Desert does not recognize or include the inflexed population of seasonal residents and snowboards living here. This is one reason why should we, we should increase the sales tax. As you know, the property owners are part of the financial accumulations that are sustaining our economic base for this county. This is limited for our population and is not centralized nor dense as urban or metropolitans are. I agree with Hildy Angus' proposal to pay one amount in increase of the quarter cent sales tax. At this point, she has the best solution. I plead for you all to vote for the increase of one-quarter percent, one-quarter cent sales tax because everyone that become, that comes to Mojave County will be adding to our economy and increasing economic base, and this is, decision will not burden Mojave County fixed income residents. Thank you very much.
Okay, input from our Board members, Supervisor Angus?
Thank you, Chairman Watson. First, I want to thank the people who came up. When we started talking about this last year, which we did, we talked about the needs, the priorities, the pension was just sort of this idea in the back, but it has become more prevalent and we talked about the sheriff, and that's why I narrowed my proposal down to the sheriff and the paying down of the debt. And I've been talking about it all year in my community, these people who have come today are from the Tea Party, and I can't express going up in front of Tea Party and I, you know how hard it is for them to come and support any tax, but they understand what's happening. I mean, I've told them we can come up with two, three, four million dollars to cover the shortfalls, which I believe we can, but this big $21 million debt and to, to Steve Robinson who said that we don't know, we do know, we do know this number, 21 million. And I've asked, I had asked a member of the Treasurer's Department to put together exactly the number, what we will be paying in interest. And he put together three different scenarios, whether we paid it monthly, biannual or annually, and no matter how you look at it, we're gonna be paying about $20 million in interest on the $21 million debt, which is outrageous, you know, not fiscally conservative, and I, I, I'm so happy that the Tea Party understands that the fiscally conservative thing to do is not to waste your money on interest and strangle, you know, future boards that are coming down the pike and with all these other issues. So, you know, I will go back to my previous, I, when I gave that proposal two weeks ago, I talked about four million for the Sheriff's Office, but I'm open to other variations thereof. I do think we need to give some, and a, a good amount to the Sheriff's Department and then all the rest of it to go to pay towards that debt. The details about when it sunsets, whether we want to use it for all the future debts, that I leave for discussion today. So thank you.
Supervisor Moss?
I'll concur with what Supervisor Angus has stated in that I'm very flexible on what we do on the exact terms because we have to have a consensus of five. I do believe however that we have to do something, one, because it's just not, we know it's 39 million and change, we know that. We know it's 21 million for PS, PRS. We know the balance is gonna go to EORP. The only real question is on what payment terms do we have to pay the EORP portion as opposed to the PS, PRS portion? And the experts have already come out and told us, pay off the PS, PRS as fast as you can and gather as much money as you can for EORP and put it aside, because once you know the P, the, the payment terms, you wanna, we guarantee you, we want to, you want to knock that out immediately if you can. So if all the sales tax money goes towards pension obligations, I'm content with that, not happy because I despise the tens of millions of interests that we're doing this for, this tax increase for, in order to avoid tens of millions of interest. I do think taxing is not conservative. On the other hand, I think not paying our bills and not providing law enforcement is even worse, and there's a certain point where pragmatism has to come into play. So whether it's all towards pension, partly towards pension, partly towards sheriff, I'd be okay with either one of those two scenarios because at least we're addressing, I think we had upwards of 10, 10 problems as a county to deal with, some named three, others named 10, but we, it addresses one or two of our significant problems. The only caveat I would add to that is if we do the quarter cent sales tax and the sheriff is involved in that and it's not exclusively pension, that we say essentially the sheriff could take upwards of four million, but to the extent they don't take it, because I think it would take time for them to get the extra 20 or 30 deputies are looking for, what they don't use would also go to pension until they max out their four million, to give them that flexibility and clarification. So that's, that's if we do a, a hybrid system as opposed to all pension. But I'm okay with whatever we need to do to knock out the debt. I'm also okay with bringing the sheriff into it if it's the will of the Board, I should say law enforcement, because I think we probably should address probation too, but that's just another thing in there, but I'm okay with that. I'm not happy, I think we got stuck with a raw deal, our taxpayers got stuck with a raw deal, but it's the reality, and rather than crying about it and moaning about it, we have to address it, we have to deal with it.
Thank you Supervisor Moss. Supervisor Bishop?
Thank you Chairman Watson, and first off, I want to say that I, I appreciate what Supervisor Angus and Supervisor Moss have said, and I don't disagree, in fact, I, I actually do agree. But I think this takes unanimous approval of all five supervisors, and I think if, if we limit this quarter cent sales tax to just the pension debt to pay it down, then I believe, and hopeful that Supervisor Johnson might chime in and support that, I, I don't know if he would support adding the Sheriff's Office into the equation, and I think that's something that we can address in other areas of the budget. So my support would be for the quarter cent sales tax to go to pay down the, the debt that Mojave County was certainly not responsible for, but it's been given to us and we need to pay it off as soon as possible.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to point out, and I think there was someone, one of the speakers indicated that we should take time to look at this and study it and wait and see what other people do, the cities and counties. I'd like to point out, in my research, we're only one of three counties that have the ability left to just pay it. I don't know of any cities that are prepared for it to be able to find a funding solution for it. So I think it's on top of us to make that decision today and get after it. I really appreciate all the comments, and I'll, I'll go to Supervisor Johnson.
I have no comment, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor Johnson.
Please, so in, during this discussion, I don't know if it would be part of it or after, the idea of refinancing it, taking out a lower interest loan or finding some money of ours to pay it, you know, as some combination thereof, is, is that possible to do?
Supervisor, County Administrator?
Mr. Chairman Supervisors, absolutely. If, if this item was approved, what administration would do would be to exhaust whatever resources are available to find out what's in the best interest on financing for Mojave County. And what, the key to being able to finance anything is that you'd have a dedicated revenue source that couldn't be diverted to something else. So in financing, let's say if we go low government bonds or, or something along that line, we would try to find the best bargain out there for Mojave County, the best deal for our residents and with a dedicated revenue source, and that's, that's the key. You know, dedicated for a specific purpose for, for paying off this debt, that would give us a lot of flexibility in going after, that would give us the flexibility that we would need to go after finding a better, better method of payment for this debt.
In the motion, would, would we need this actual sunset date? Can you leave a sunset date open as to if the, the debt is paid off or when it's paid off? I mean, does, does that have to be in the motion?
Go ahead. Madam, Mr. Chairman Supervisor Angus, I'll, I'll leave that up to an attorney opinion, and just, just for Royanne's edification, the actual resolution that Supervisor, that, that Chairman Watson prepared said that, that the duration of the quarter cent sales tax would be until the debt was retired. So it is in the resolution, would it need to be in the motion?
I don't think it needs to be in the motion, but it'd be put in the resolution, and the statute itself that's, that's authorizing the Board to pass this tax, to my knowledge, does not specify when, how long it can be and so forth. There's some taxes that it, that can only be imposed for so many years, this is not one of them. And I defer to our Finance Director, I believe that's correct, there's, this is not one in the statute itself that specifies how long it can go and so forth, yes.
And it's for all our pension debts?
That's correct, that's the way it was drafted.
Not just PS, PRS, EOR and ARS.
That's the way it was drafted, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna take a stab at a motion on item 45A, and I make, I move that...
Can I interject a point?
Sure.
Prior to this, as I wrote the motion up, in looking at specifically addressing your item for refinance, that's why I limited it to just those items. So I just wanted to make sure that you know that's why, that, that, I, I really appreciate your support for the sheriff, I support him too, but I think in, in this particular indebtedness that the county has, we had to be razor sharp to make sure we could get that financing.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion, and I have no idea if it's gonna pass, so, but, so if it fails, I have no hard feelings against anybody, that we approve a quarter cent sales tax for purposes of hiring law enforcement and dealing with pay and compression issues up to a total of $4 million of that sales tax, law enforcement to include probation and the Sheriff's Department, that the balance that's above and beyond four million or in any given fiscal year which is not used by law enforcement would go to pay down the pension debt, that the county be directed to discover the lowest possible financing rate that they could obtain, in addition to using excessive fund balances at 0% interest if they exist, and finally, that the sales tax would sunset once the pension debt is retired.
Okay, we have a motion?
And I'll second that.
And a second by Supervisor Angus. Any further discussion?
I have a couple of questions.
Supervisor Bishop?
So the, the $4 million for the Sheriff's Office comes right off the, the top, is, is that what you're...
Up to four million, they can't exceed it, but law enforcement...
So we're not paying down, we're not paying down the debt with any of the sales tax until the Sheriff's Office gets their $4 million?
No, because they get... No, because they get, we get roughly three and a half. It could go up and down depending on the economy. So, automatically, the presumption is it's 4 million towards law enforcement, 3 and 1/2 million dollars towards pension debt. But if law enforcement does not use the entirety of a $4 million in any given year, the amount they do not use, and I anticipate there'd be at least a few years before they use the entirety of the 4 million, that amount they did not use would also be directed to pension debt. So, hypothetically, if Sheriff Schuster and probation can only use 2 million in this particular year, they deal with their compression, maybe hire a half dozen or so deputies, because they can't just hire anybody. They gotta get the right people. That means there'd be 5.5 million under the, or, excuse me, 4.5 million under our current estimates going towards the pension debt and 2 million towards law enforcement. As time goes on, law enforcement would approach that $4 million. And then we'd be paying 3 and 1/2 million a year, hopefully at a 0% or very low interest rate, not the 7.4%, until the pension debt is retired. And then at that point, we'd have to come back to the board.
Now, just so I'm a little straight on your, your process here, the $4 million would include the sheriff's department and the probation department?
It would, but they would have to work together in order to figure out that amount and come back to the board if there's any dispute. Probation is only a compression issue. The sheriff is hiring and compression.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
The sheriff includes the jail as well.
That's why I said sheriff and law enforcement. I'm using law enforcement as my label here, because there's jailers, there's sheriff's deputies, there's 911 operators. They're all impacted. But there's probation. They're all impacted by this.
Okay. Just wanted to be clear.
And I just wanted to make a clarification on the number, numbers, because this is such an important issue. What we're, what we're discussing, quarter cent sales tax would realize is 6, 6.5 million. So, if the sheriff was able to take 4 million off the top, there'd be 2.5 remaining from the quarter cent sales tax. Just, just a clarification.
Correct. If they could, if they started day one with 4 million, if law enforcement then would, under our current budget estimates, they would get 2.5 towards pension. I say that because I want to pay off the pension debt, but first I want to provide law and order. We has people from Fort Mojave speak out here, where we have, what, two sheriff deputies running around? And there are places there where it's the wild, wild west of meth dealers and everything else that we need to, and he needs manpower. He, he needs manpower all over Mojave County, Arizona. And once we arrest them and convict them and sentence them and they get out, we need probation officers who can make sure they're on the straight and narrow or send them back to prison, one way or the other. So, primarily it's focused on law enforcement. If law enforcement does not use it all, it would go to pension debt, but there would always be anything above and beyond. If sales tax increases because the economy improves, let's say we get 7 million, it would be 3 million towards the pension debt and 4 million towards law enforcement if they're using it all. So, any excess as the economy improves is going towards pension debt.
And then the, the sunset would be once the pension debt is paid off?
Once the pension debt's paid off, it has to come back to the board. Hopefully, by that time, our finances will have improved sufficiently that we could bear the sheriff's department out of the general fund. But we can't solve the woes of the entirety of the world. We just have to know that there's going to be, hopefully someday, a drop dead date on this.
Right.
Okay. So, if that is the motion, I, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to retract my second, because the probation brings in a whole different thing. It's two different departments. I think it would have to be more exact. Just say, okay, here's $4 million, you know, split, you know, run up and split it. I, I think we would have to, there would be a, a lot more research and negotiation having to do if, because this is the first time probation's been brought into it. I mean, last, two weeks ago, we, we talked about it. I thought mistakenly that probation was part of the sheriff, and I apologize for that. But now that we're talking about that, it's just, it's too vague. That's my only problem.
Well, the 4 million would be part of our budget. And if they have a dispute, we as a board will resolve it within that 4 million. But I'll say here again, as part of my motion, the probation portion is only to deal with compression. So, and the sheriff's portion is only, is for compression and hiring.
And if I understand correctly, the probation department does consist of law enforcement as well?
Well, they're, they can arrest people. They have guns and badges.
Yeah.
Okay. You withdraw on your mo-
I withdraw on my second.
Okay. I'll second it.
And you second it? Okay. Then, I think this would be best done by roll call vote.
Supervisor Angus?
Uh, no.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Moss?
Yes.
And Chairman Watson?
At this point, there makes no difference, so I'm going to say no.
Motion does not pass.
Motion did not pass. And that was the modified motion. What I would like to do now is present the original motion as written on our agenda, for the adoption of the Board of Supervisors Resolution 2017-073, adopting and levying a 1/4 sales tax on each person engaging or continuing in Mojave County in a business tax under Chapter 5, Article 1, Section 17, Section 42-5352, to be used exclusively for paying the PS, PRS, and the EORP unfunded position liabilities, retirement refunds to eligible members, recurring employee contribution rates, and any associated expenses incurred as a result of the Arizona Supreme Court decisions.
Motion to discuss-
Certainly.
Before we go on with this very important vote, to be clear, is there any debate, is there any negotiation with, I don't even know if I'm allowed to say this, but with Supervisor Johnson, who's been on record of saying no, that, that he would support if it was a lesser amount going to law enforcement? So, instead of it all going to the debt, is there any, is there any combination that would, would be-
Gotta ask him.
Am I allowed? That's what I'm asking.
Yes. We're having a discussion.
Let's ask Mr. Esplin.
Yes, it's, it's an open meeting and we're discussing this particular item agenda. It's on the agenda.
All right. So, that's the question Supervisor Johnson.
I'd like to ask that question to Supervisor-
I would love to add to that question. Thank you. Supervisor Johnson, I'm asking the question. Is there any, is there any negotiation for law enforcement within this motion for the quarter cent sales tax?
I think what the agenda item was, was for paying down the debt that we've incurred through the state. And I think that's the most important thing that we have to address as far as debt goes.
Okay.
But I think the problem's going to be that it doesn't need to be done today. It's, even if we were to say, yes, we agree that we ought to do some kind of a sales tax, it still has to go to public hearings. It has to be voted on. And once it's voted on, it still takes, I think it's at least six months before it can be enacted. So, it's not a cure-all. If we, if we put something today, you know, we're going to get the money tomorrow, because if we can't start collecting it for six months, then the money trickles in. So, no, at this point, I'm not ready to-
Okay.
-vote for any sales tax at all.
Answer your question. Item fails for, for a motion.
I will, I will, well, I make the motion that we approve item 45A, as you, as you read into the record. So, I made my motion for it.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll second it.
Well, we can go ahead and-
Take the vote?
And go for it. Take the vote if you'll take, roll call vote on it.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Moss?
Yes.
Chairman Watson?
Uh, yes.
And motion does not pass, because it has to be unanimous.
That is correct.
If I can have a, a question. When it comes to sales tax, can a majority put it on the agenda for purposes of public hearing?
Certainly. I would think Supervisor, Mr. Esplin.
You moved to put it on for a public hearing. That's correct, yes.
Then, on 45A, I would instead request that staff calendar 45A for a public hearing, and that's in the form of a motion.
Second.
A motion and second for a public hearing within 45 days or within 45 days?
Well, within whatever budgetary and legal timeframes that we have. And it would be for a quarter cent sales tax. The exact payment terms would be for pension and other issues as decided by unanimous vote of the Board of Supervisors.
Okay. We have a motion and a section. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Mark and carry. Okay. At this point in time, we will take a recess, so we can be addressed by the State of Arizona's agent for the open meeting law training. Yes, I believe it's going to be at 11 o'clock. We'll do it out here. We'll, we'll go from here to the audience. And so, I'm not sure if there's any, what time you got? So, we have 10 minutes before it starts? Okay. Reconvene the Board of Supervisors meeting from Mojave County. And we pick up on 45B, of which I have no desire to go any further today.
I do.
Okay.
I have some thoughts here.
Some thoughts?
Yes.
If we can run 45B, Mr. Chairman. Is Supervisor Johnson online? I think we should confirm that before we-
Double check.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Good. Is, we just approved 45A to be brought back to us at an open meeting, or, excuse me, a public hearing. But I would also like to be brought back to us at a public hearing, referring the quarter cent sales tax to the voters, when it comes to same, essentially the same issue, but rather than a board-approved version, which is 45A, potentially having a public-approved version of 45A, if that's allowable, which is why I'm now looking at Ryan Esplin. Also, his hair's turning grayer as we go on today.
I, I think what you, what you're proposing here would be outside of the agenda item. So, just bring it back at a future, on a future agenda, where it'd be a new item.
Well, it says other viable funding mechanisms to address the county's debt and long-term liabilities. And I'm talking about saying the pension debt to the voters.
Mr. Chairman, one of the things that I understood, and I'm not the attorney, but that Ryan would need to look into, obviously, is, it's my understanding, at least talking to, in the discussion regarding the quarter cent sales tax, if it's a general excise tax. That statute talks about general excise tax being decided by the Board of Supervisors and through unanimous vote of the board. And it was at least my understanding, and something that the attorney will look into, that, that, that power, that, that administrative power by the board cannot be given away to a vote of the people. It has to be decided by the board. Like, unlike the transportation tax, which would go specifically to the vote of the people. So, I guess that would be the question that's being asked, is that can the Board of Supervisors by any type of a vote, put the quarter cent excise tax to the vote of the people? And it was my understanding, at least, that it couldn't be.
And the reason that's important, because, for example, the city of Prescott's doing the exact same thing. They're sending their pension liability to the people to be paid with by a sales tax. Now, I understand we're a county, they're a city, and there might be different authorities. But that's important, because as an alternative to A, we might want to consider B, because that way, if we wind up paying 60% or 60 million dollars in interest on these two pension funds, at least we can say we tried to do something about it.
I, I'd be, I'm spitballing here, so to speak, but I would say-
I would say bring it back if the legal counsel thinks it's appropriate.
I'd imagine so. But I, I imagine, the statute specifically says it's got to be unanimous board approval. I don't think it's going to be something you can, you can give to the vote of the people.
Then, another issue that I would like to bring up under B is the proposed transportation tax that we were going to send to the people. And this is my take, having looked into it for a little while now. I think we need a transportation tax. I think if we do a special election, we're going to fail. I primarily think that because more and more fire districts are putting bonds and other issues on the ballot. It will not be a single-issue election. It will be a multiple-tax-issue election. And I think we would have problems if we try to get it through with a mess of other polls that are coming through. And that might want to wait till 2018. So, that's another issue that I think that we should be discussing under 45B. Are we going to take the transportation tax to a special election? Or are we going to do it in 2018? Because in my view, currently, which I reserve the right to change, is 2017 is a very low chance of success, and that maybe we should spend that time working with the cities and not be in a rush to get it through.
Very good.
So, those are my two off-the-cup thoughts, which are vaguely related to A but are not A, and that we should be keeping in mind.
I broaden the latitude for your discussion.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. And cities, I think it's a very important factor that we visit with the cities.
Right.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just for the board's information, as directed, I have scheduled meetings, and all three of the city managers have agreed to attend it. I haven't heard from Colorado City yet. So, those meetings should be, we're going to be having them early next week, late, late this week.
Okay. I hope there's no other comments, because I'm going to shut it down for that.
That's all my comments on B. I'll save the rest of mine for 46.
Okay. Very good. So, there's no action on, on B? Thank you. Moving on to item number 46, and that's the discussion, possible action regarding the adoption of the fiscal year 2017, 2018 tentative budget with modifications, instead of public hearing on August 7th for 2017, for the public hearing on the final budget, and the tax levy, truth and taxation if applicable, and set a special board meeting for the adoption of the final budget, August 7th, 2017, following the public hearing. This has been continued from the June 5th meeting. And so, we have our staff from Financial Services. There you go.
There we go. With the continuance of this item, the board directed staff to bring back three separate budget proposals. One that included the sales tax increase along the lines of discussion items from the board. The second item was a prop, with a property tax increase to include similar items as was subject to board discussion. And then the third proposal would be a budget, a balanced budget with no tax increases along the lines that had been discussed by the board. Based upon the discussion, it also included a desire to have flexibility within the notice, so that you could, again, have liberty to discuss the budget and options in entirety. Based upon that direction, included in your budget package are three, are the three proposals that are broken down into just single-page items. So, going with the first one with the quarter cent excise tax proposal, subsequent, well, and this would apply to all three of those, but subsequent to our discussion, we became aware of the need to include within our revenue sources, the ADJC one-time partial reimbursement. This was something that had been previously swept from the state, and this partial reimbursement was included for the fiscal year. That's $250,500. And then at the prior board meeting, the Board of Supervisors did approve some changes within the Public Health Department's compensation schedule, which reduced the impact to the general fund, and therefore we were able to reduce the budget transfer to that department by $17,514. And with the action that you took earlier today, the board actually reduced, with the reclassifications and pay change in the assessors' budget, a reduction to the general fund of $11,239. That resulted in an adjusted budget deficit of about 2.5 million. That resulted in an adjusted budget deficit of about $2.5 million. So across all three proposals, we've repeated the same information. We'll now begin the discussions going forward with a deficit of $2.5 million. For the sales tax proposal, adding in, the quarter cent, of course, would raise about, or we're estimating, $6.5 million. The discussion ensued that we would use about $4 million, and that was in a variety of discussion areas, I believe. It was up to $4 million, and the sheriff spoke on that item as well at the prior meeting, with implementing those portions over a period of years. But as presented, it was a $4 million target. We would also utilize $700,000 toward the payment of the unfunded liability of the PSPRS. That would include utilizing $1.2 million for the one-time court settlement of both the public safety pension and the elected official's pension, and then just the recurring contribution rate increase portion for the PSPRS of $600,000. Combining the new income and those appropriations as discussed then would cure the $2.5 million deficit, except to the tune of $704,000. It would not include providing...the $700,000 would not include then providing specified funding for the indigent defense capital cases, and the remaining was the major maintenance, is how we arrived at the $704,000. The next proposal for the property tax proposal, as discussed, again, starting with a $2.5 million deficit. If we included a 25 percent property tax increase, would raise about $4.4 million. 14 cents of that would then be utilized for the deficit. That would leave available 5 cents for the sheriff's budget appropriations for public safety, $869,000, $870,000 rounded. 1 cent for probation for their public safety efforts as well, rounds to about $174,000. And 5 cents for the court project that would need to be then saved up for four years, and that rounded out to about $870,000. With the income, with the property tax as calculated, those budgeted expenses, then we were able to balance the budget so that there's no structural deficit, and the fund balance would remain the same. The third option to present you a budget with no inclusion of any tax increase. In this case, again, we're starting with the $2.5 million deficit. In order to achieve a neutral impact, then we would need to remove the amounts that we were anticipating needing to be paid for the court settlement, in which case PSPRS has advised that we can utilize a credit against our current year's liability. And that's what we would need to do in order to take off the $1.2 million without further action by the Board. That would be equivalent of 7 cents of property tax that we're then eliminating with our increase. We would remove $200,000 that was appropriated within the general administration's line item for legal services, and this did include appropriation for the water attorney and the other matters that the Board had discussed, and that was valued at $200,000 or a penny. And then, without any further discussion of what you'd particularly like to see cut, if possible, then the balance would come out of contingency. We appropriated $2 million in contingency. We would remove $1.1 million, which is 6 cents. Moving the contingency from $2 million, and you would have remaining about $900,000, and it would bring you a balanced budget. Of note here, that it does not then include any funding for the $20 million and the $39 million liability in total. It does eliminate the $200,000 that may be needed for legal issues and the water attorney, and it does obviously reduce the contingency. So those proposals were, in conclusion, you know, what we came up with to adopt to the language that was discussed by the Board. And so at this time, I would turn it back over to the Board for discussion, and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Lloyd. I think at this point, we'll have the people that have signed up to speak to the issue, and I think we've got enough background now for them to speak. So, Mr. Robinson available for comment? Royanne Ortiz. And thank you for your patience. It's been a long day for you, I'm sure.
Yes, it has. Okay, my name's Royanne Ortiz. I'm at 1550 Mona Vista Drive, Bullhead City. I actually made a copy of those three things and took a look at them, and it seemed that the only viable thing to solve our issues with the Sheriff's Department, and especially since he said, "If I can't get something done for my deputies, there's going to be a mass leaving of all his deputies." Okay, and...thank you, an exodus, which then would require the county, I assume, to ask the cities to come and help him with public safety. And so then what would happen? Then the county would have to pay the cities for the public safety services, which is going to cost a heck of a lot more, being that all of these police officers are paid a lot more than our sheriffs, and I'm sure there'd be an administrative cost to it, too. That's my opinion on that. I figured the first one is the best solution to the problem. And also, I think it is disgusting that one person can force all the others into voting whether there's going to be a property tax, because that's the only other two choices left, or whether we're going to totally ignore the debt for the sheriffs and their pension fund. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ortiz. Okay, now we can open discussion for the Board. Supervisor Moss?
I'd like to go through a few things, if I could, Ms. Lloyd, just so I have a good grasp on things. When it comes to the no general fund tax increase proposal, does that mean that there's still a 10-cent tax for library districts?
Yes.
Okay. Second, when it comes to the property tax...I'm leaving the sales tax aside, since that's, at least as of right now, is dead. But, well, not dead, almost dead. On the property tax proposal, does that also include the 10 cents for the libraries to keep them functional?
Yes.
Okay. On the issue of water, does your current property tax proposal, this proposal where there is a property tax, does that include, built into the prior budget, the $200,000 per year, so we can have a water attorney or money for water resource issues?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And it's only really removed in the no-tax proposal? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm just making sure that I and anyone else who is sitting at home doing this can follow along. When it comes to the sheriff's office, the general fund tax proposal, property tax proposal, only allocates $800,000 to the sheriffs. Is that correct? Roughly, $870?
Yes.
Okay, and so that is 20 percent of what he's requested to solve his manpower and compression issues?
Of the 40 percent...or the 4 million?
Of the 4 million that he said he needs? Okay. And that's completely eliminated in the no-tax proposal?
That's correct.
Okay. When it comes to the no-tax proposal, is there any monies allocated to payment of the $39 million, and including all the pension funds together?
Okay, that's fine.
Both the $21 million that we know is going to be 7.4 percent, and the balance, which is, they're still negotiating that right now. Is there any payment towards that debt?
Not at all.
Is there any payment towards the $1.2 million that we owe the employees for the six years that, according to the Arizona Supreme Court, money was being wrongfully withheld from their wages?
What it includes is that we would, in fact, refund the $1.2 million, but then take that as a credit against our current year's liability.
Does that result in us incurring more debt?
Yes.
Okay. So basically, we're borrowing money under that proposal?
Yes, you're growing your liability.
Okay. So then, if I can do some rough math, our pension debt becomes roughly $40.2 million?
Yes.
Okay. Principle, I should say. When it comes to the property tax proposal, that includes monies towards the courthouse. Is that correct?
Yes.
To finish the construction of that? Does it include anything for the animal shelter?
No.
Okay. Under the no-property tax proposal, is there anything given for construction of the courthouse?
No.
Is there anything given towards the construction of the new animal shelter?
No.
Okay. When it comes to probation, under the property tax proposal, I see they get 1 penny. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And that's what they need to fix their compression issue? Is that...that's my understanding. I just want you to confirm it.
That was my understanding of the discussion.
All right. When it comes to the no-tax proposal, there is no fixing the probation's compression issue? Am I right about that?
Correct, it does not.
Okay. And when it comes to the no-tax proposal, there's no fixing of the sheriff's compression issue?
Correct.
Okay. Which is a separate and distinct, but related issue from the desire to hire more deputies issue. All right. The capital cases, under the property tax proposal, is there money given to fund the capital cases that we have ongoing?
Yes.
Okay. Under the no-property tax proposal, is there money to fund the capital cases that we have going?
Yes. So we did not remove that, because that is an absolute, that we've been provided, that we are going to have to incur those costs.
So if I were looking at this from purposes of a tentative budget, not a preliminary budget, tentative, and my understanding...just make sure I'm clear. My understanding that a tentative budget, you can remove things between approving the tentative budget and the preliminary budget, but you can't add things. Is that correct?
That's correct, between the tentative and the final.
So if I wanted, to keep the options alive, hoping against hope that maybe a sales tax was proposed, some of these items should be imposed or approved within the tentative budget, which could possibly then come out in the preliminary budget?
In the final.
Okay.
Not the preliminary, but the final.
So I'm going to go through a few things with you, just to make sure that I've got it right, okay? Because this is just me speaking, and this is not what I may not necessarily be voting for at the end of the day, but for purposes of the tentative budget, I'd like to go back through all those issues and get some numbers from you, if I could.
Okay.
All right. I'm leaving this side the library, because it's solved regardless, is my understanding. Is that right?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Moss, may I get a clarification on that one? Because I had a question regarding both the quarter cent sheriff PSPRS proposal, the 25-cent property tax proposal, and the no-tax-at-all proposal.
If you could, because I'm going to go-
Because it's very important, and I think it's very germane to what you're getting at.
Please.
It was my understanding, when asked, "Do these proposals contain the 10 cents for the library?" And our tax rate is at what, $2.90?
For the general fund?
Yes.
It's currently at $1.96.
$1.96. And do any of these proposals include the 10 cents to make the library district whole? Or is that going to have to be acted upon separately?
That is separate.
That's...I believe that answers your question, that, no, these proposals do not include the 10 cents.
And that's because the library district is not being discussed here? This is merely general fund?
That's correct. I just wanted to-
Thank you for that clarification. Because I could feel Supervisor Angus getting antsy to my right. Remember, they warned us about non-verbal communication a little while earlier. Let's go through...I'm going to put the library aside, okay? That's a separate issue. That's not general fund. Would we have to add anything to your property tax proposal to fund the water law attorney so we can continue to protect ourselves from raids from central Arizona?
We've included $200,000 in the property tax proposal. It's within the deficit of the $2.5 million.
Okay. So there is monies allocated so we can have some sort of legal defense, whether with or without Mojave County Water Authority, on water issues, under the property tax proposal?
Correct.
Okay. Under the sheriff, I see that we have...the sheriff's asked for $400,000. Under the property tax proposal, we have given him, or suggested that he take, $869,000. What would it take...because we say 5 cents here, what number would that have to be raised to, to include his 4 million in the tentative, but not preliminary, budget?
It looks like it's about 25 cents. So the 4...we're proposing that we already increase it to 4.4 million, so it's about that.
Okay, so it would be...it would take another...since you already got 5 cents, and you want to get another...well, we might want to give another 3.1 million. That means we'd have to raise that to a total of 25 cents, not 5 cents. All right. On the pension, which the property tax proposal, and I'm looking through this real fast, doesn't have anything for the pension debt. Am I wrong about that?
Nope.
Or is it baked in?
In the $2.5 million of the deficit, it includes the $1.2 for the court settlement.
Okay, but it does not include the $39 million?
It does not.
Okay. If we wanted to make payments on the $39 million, or at least keep that option alive between now and the preliminary budget, what amount of tax would have to be included in there if we wanted to make, say hypothetically, $4 million a year or $3 million a year payments on that pension debt?
If it was $4 million, then 25 cents.
Just like the sheriff, thank you.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
If it was $4 million a year towards the pension debt, we would have to raise taxes 25 cents.
25 cents.
Okay. The courthouse, it looks like it's already been addressed here. When the animal shelter, if we wanted to include money for an animal shelter at roughly $2 million, would that be 12 and 1/2 cents?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. It looks like, under this proposal, you've already dealt with the probation issue, and under this proposal, you've already dealt with the capital case issue, is that correct?
Yes.
So it's already paying for the Richter trial, and in similar situations that may arise, has already been dealt with in this property tax proposal?
Correct.
All right. So if I was to add, just from my rough math, into your property tax proposal, we could make progress on the pension debt, we could solve the sheriff's problems, and we can also deal with the animal shelter if we were to include an additional 62 and 1/2 cents in that property tax proposal?
You could, but you have a ceiling, so that would be exceeding-
Thank you. You got my next question. What's our ceiling?
50 cents.
$2.49, $2.50 rounded.
So the animal shelter then comes out, and we can deal with the sheriff and the pension issue?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. You have answered my questions as well as you can, though I have some more, actually, because I got to my little squiggly line, and I made some more comments. We need to keep the $20 million in the general fund balance, if I remember your last presentation to the Board, because we go without any revenue for three months as a county. Is that correct?
Not any revenue, but the majority of the revenue. So we do receive a little bit with state shared revenue in each of those months, but it's less than a million dollars.
Okay. And that means we have to have roughly, give or take, a little bit, $6 million a month on reserve in order to pay the bills for those first three months?
Correct.
Okay. And I understand that, and I agree with that, okay? And I understand that, and I agree with that, okay? We don't want our checks bouncing. I do have a question about the other $60 million in fund balances. Are there any dollars in those fund balances which are restricted only by board policy and not state law that we could utilize to give ourselves a 0% loan from, to pay down the pension debt?
There are that are up to the board, so our internal service fund balances are up to the board's decision to have those funds and have them serviced, if you will. However, we've implemented a policy in the prior two years of reducing those funds down to 60 days, 60 to 90 days of cash flow for the same reasons as the general fund, and then, in some of those funds now, they only have a two-year window for their capital projects.
Okay. So, but this is about priorities now. Are there funds that we could utilize, which are not restricted except by board policy and board planning, that we could utilize to pay all or part of that pension debt?
And my response to that is no, they're, they've already, they're all spoken for.
Okay. Who has spoken for them? The board of supervisors on other projects? Okay. So we could change those other projects and give ourselves essentially a 0% loan, and then repay those other projects as we took tax revenue in?
Well, you, for example, if you decided to forego any new vehicle purchases, for example, next year, there would be $2 million, and we're going to eliminate any vehicle purchases.
Okay. Let me ask you it this way, because my question is not that we're paying money into those funds, but, for example, hypothetically, if the board approved $4 million a year to downpay pension debt, and we took $20 million out of those various funds, hypothetically, let's say two or whatever million dollars exists in the vehicle replacement fund, we could replace that $2 million the same year, and we can still buy the vehicles, we just paid down our pension debt by 2 million.
What would you be replenishing that with?
The $4 million a year in property tax revenue that we would be earmarking, hypothetically, for paying down the pension debt. Rather than paying it to the pension company, we're paying it to ourselves.
So, I don't, I guess I don't see where that would really escalate the payment, if you're going to receive a property tax, let's say.
Yes.
You're going to receive the majority of that in November.
Okay.
Then, at that point in time that you receive the tax, you would be able to pay that toward the pension liability, so...
Any of the 20 million, or the $60 million in fund balances that we have are earmarked for multi-year projects, are they not? They're not going to be spent this year, we're not spending all 60 million this year.
Most of it is not available. So, of the internal services, for example, we have about four, five, six, $7 million that's available. The remaining amount of that is for the health insurance, the EBT fund.
Okay, we can't talk, touch the EBT stuff, I understand that.
The road funds have $12 million to $15 million in their...
That's HERF monies, though.
Cannot touch that.
Right.
So all of the other items are just like that. The enterprise funds are specifically utilized by user fees, and then they're reserved for items that are within those funds.
Reserved by who? The board? Is that right? We're the ones that are...
Not entirely. So, for the landfill, for example, that's the one with the largest balance.
What's the balance in the landfill?
It has about 14 to 15 million in total.
Okay.
10 and 1/2 million of that is reserved, a 10.9 million, I believe, is within the closure, post-closure. We've got about $2 million in the waste tire, and then a tiny little bit in the household hazardous waste, and the rest is then is in the operating fund.
So a portion of that could be utilized to pay down pension debt?
We need to have a reserve in there as well of 25% in order to pay our bills in those funds.
Okay. Correct me if I'm wrong, did not we sweep those landfill funds, at least the user fees, in order to go towards the building of one of these buildings here in Kingman?
We didn't, so, the, in regard to the...
We borrowed.
We did.
So why can't we borrow again, against our own fund, against our own savings account?
That was several years ago, when there were larger funding balances in each of those funds. So at this point, those funds are spoken for. They've been drawn down so that we've got three or four months of operations in there. We have our five-year capital plans that are not fully funded in those funds, and the rest, the balance remaining to the closure, post-closure, which we're required to keep. We have infrastructure failure potential, for example, with the waste tire proposal. There was an event, even if the tires are moved to Phoenix, Mojave County is still responsible for those tires. So if there's a fire, then we will be on the hook, which is the reason that those funds are retained, for the payment and the cleanup of those environmental issues.
What other fund balances are out there? We've talked about $7 million in the internal services fund, we've talked about, how many million do we have in the vehicle replacement fund? Is that two?
We have about 4 million in the vehicle replacement.
4 million. Is there any thing stopping us from taking a loan against that vehicle replacement fund for 4 million?
Well, for the same reasons.
We're talking policy now, but is there anything legally stopping us from taking a loan against that vehicle replacement fund?
Legally, no.
Okay. When it comes to the landfill fund, there's roughly 50, we can't talk about HERF, so I'm pushing HERF aside, we wouldn't want to talk about HERF anyway, roads are equally as important here. What percentage of that, whether it's good policy or not, would we legally borrow against?
For the landfill?
Yes.
I don't know, that would be, I don't, I don't know what the lie is with the waste tire.
Mr. Ashburn?
I don't know about the waste tire, but the closure, post-closure, that would be an issue that I'd be concerned about if we were borrowing against.
A legal concern or a policy concern?
Both, and I won't address policy, that's for the board, and I won't do that.
Thank you.
I'll stick with legal. It seems as if, from my reading of that, and we just, I just recently reviewed that, that those fees must be used related to waste, and cleanup waste, and related to waste, and so forth. So to divert them from that fund to another one, I think would be improper, and it would be illegal.
That's the word I'm looking for, illegal, okay. Bad idea, I don't care about, illegal is what I'm caring about.
That would be illegal.
All right.
To borrow against it, it'd be something I would, I don't know the answer to, but I suspect it would probably be close to illegal, because you're borrowing money that's really supposed to go towards the landfill, and the waste, and the disposal, and those kind of things. Is it a way to go around it? Possibly, but I wouldn't feel comfortable telling, advising you to do that from a legal standpoint.
Okay. I only have a couple more questions, Ms. Lloyd, and by the way, you're doing a very good job, you're very well-prepared, you know your stuff, and I applaud you, and your entire department, you guys do great work, is, forget the three proposals you submitted to us today, the...
I would love to.
[laughing] So would I. Forget the sales tax, forget the property tax, forget the no-tax-at-all. Let's go back to the prior budget you submitted to us.
Okay.
Did that prior budget include 1.2 million to pay the money refund, needed to be refunded to the employees?
Yes.
All right, Supervisor Angus, I really do owe you a dollar. All right, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay.
I have, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, I would say that for purposes of tentative budget, I'd like to include the, and only for purposes of tentative budget, I would like to increase the sheriff's function to 25 cents, and the pension repayment to 25 cents, that would be my suggestion, as we go through this process.
Thank you. And I think it might help to clarify things, that on the closure, post-closure of the landfill, I believe that's audited each year, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
So what would you tell the auditor, we just decided to borrow $10 million from What would be their response?
Well, we would have to get a legal opinion that that were acceptable, which we're not going to, so...
I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that that's audited very closely each year by the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. Supervisor Angus?
Then how was it used when they, when you guys built the development services building? Didn't you borrow against it?
Mr. Hendrick?
I believe it was used, a portion of it was used for the public works building, and that was because landfills is housed in the public works building, so we...
So it wasn't illegal when you did it that way?
They have to have a roof over their head, so we justified the road department paying a portion, we justified GVID paying a portion, we justified the landfill paying a portion, and we justified I-40 paying a portion, you know, so the users participated in paying for, I believe, the sheriff for building the building. Now, early in the history, let's say in the, if I can recall, maybe it was the 90s, there was some monies borrowed against that landfill fund, but I believe they paid it back at about 3% interest, which was acceptable in those days, and, you know, it could be possibly that Civil Division viewed it a little differently than they do now. I know Ryan's, you know, passionate about digging into the law, and researching, and providing the best opinion to the board that he possibly can, so it could be a difference of legal opinion back then, but regardless, it was ensured that any monies borrowed against those funds were repaid with interest.
Okay. Supervisor Angus, your comment?
Well, you know where I stand. So for this 2.5, if we were going to pay that 1.2, which I think we really need to, where can we take it from? There is someplace we can find 1.2 million dollars. We can, right?
We can't, we've provided...
We can't.
So you would have to give the...
So above all that landfill, there was still like $2 million, you know, you're keeping your reserve, you're keeping all that stuff, the vehicle replacement fund, you know, don't do some of the purchases you were going to do. If we really needed to find it, you don't think we can find it, at all. We can't find 2.5 million dollars in this budget.
I don't think that I'm in a fair position to tell you specifically, you know, which department you would go and try to find $30,000 at a time or something. They've all appealed to you and said that they believe that this is as skinny as they're going to get. Many of these are mandated, you could certainly look at non, the non-mandated functions, and try to extrapolate those from those departments.
Right, we could, though, we could.
You could do that.
And Mr. Chairman, may I, may I add to that? And that's a, that's a good question. When we, when we presented the no increase, no sales increase, no property tax increase budget to the, to the board, I, you know, I made a statement at that, that meeting that you requested that information from, that, you know, we would have to at least look at drastic cuts at different departments, and I tried to frame the 2 point, it was a 2.8 million at that time, but tried to frame it in a, in a perspective that it would be like taking the general fund money out of, finance out of my administration and out of HR, because that's the magnitude of cuts 2.5 million would mean, and I think we figured that it was about a 3% across the board. We didn't believe it was fair to our employees or to the departments to go to them, and we didn't have time to go to them and ask them to identify those areas, because, you know, we would be talking about our employees' livelihoods if we went that direction.
All right. So how much is in the vehicle replacement fund?
About 4 million.
4 million?
Mm-hmm.
And how much do we need to do what we need to do immediately?
Immediately?
Like, you know, what we, you're not what we want to do, but what we need to do.
Well, and I, Coral will be able to tell you that, but I think what I could tell you for, with a good certainty, is that if we looked at reducing any of those service funds, that we would, you know, and that's the purview of the board, but we would be taking, potentially damaging the organization, that's why staff didn't propose it to you.
Right, and I understand what you're saying, but we could, we could do it.
Absolutely, you can.
Right.
The board could choose to eliminate the vehicle replacement fund, and, you know, not replace vehicles, but that, you know, to me, that's not a good business practice. We've got a good business model in the vehicle replacement fund, where, you know, we have safe vehicles for the sheriff's office, we have reliable vehicles for our departments, and if we, there at one time, when we did remove the money from the vehicle replacement fund, we jeopardized being able to purchase vehicles projected out at four years.
Projected four years, but...
Yes.
You, how much, how much do we need, let's say, two years out?
So let's call it, just for argument's sake, a million a year.
A million a year, so you're about four years.
A million, 6 million, 8 a year, thank you, Coral. So...
Okay. I think we, I think if we really worked hard, we can find 2.5 million dollars out of that budget, I do. And I think, you know, everyone knows where I stand, we have a solution, it will not be on the backs of the property owners. They take it every single year, and enough, not going to happen.
Would you mind if I made a comment? For the last eight years, we have been one of the most conservative counties in Arizona, and we have the lowest, one of the lowest tax rates combined between the property tax and sales tax. And I can appreciate your point, but I've been here for those years, we've done everything that we possibly can under the sun to continue to kick the can down the road on the backs of the employees, and that's not fair.
Has the board of supervisors taken a big cut? Have we done it? Have we done it? Why don't we give our cars back? Why don't we do things? I'm saying, anyone out there who looks at our budget, there are things that we can do, and, you know, it might seem small, doing a little at a time, but we can do it, and until we do it, I don't think we should ask the property owners to do it.
Well, I'll answer your question. Mojave County does not pay for me to come to work...
I know you don't.
Every day.
I know.
Now, in any trips that I go on, anything above 25 miles, then I am reimbursed.
Right.
And we could probably work on our office budget, maybe that's a good place to look.
I think it is a good place to look for some of it, it doesn't close the gap, though. I should say this into the microphone before Jenny throws a rock at me.
And I think the water lawyer, I think, is an expenditure we can put off, we have, you know, we hired back our development services director as, on a contract, because we were told he's, you know, we need him for our water issues, and then we, as, you know, a part of MCWA now, we have a really good water lawyer looking out for us. So, I'm just saying, if we needed to, you know, really do austerity this year, I could see doing out of that. I'm just saying, there's things like that, and it adds up.
Well, certainly it adds up.
Right.
But I'm trying to tell you that for eight years, that we've been very responsible, and when I got here, there were fund balances that really need to be addressed. It's taken eight years to draw them down, and thank goodness they were there. They were there from prosperity that had occurred from 2008.
Excuse me, but they were also there because taxes had been raised, I think, for the, three out of the four years before we took office, property taxes had been raised. I mean, I could be wrong, it was at least two, but I think three years, so we've been trying, and so, you know, so yes, so the fund balances were high, because we were taxing, and, you know, we promised, you know, when I ran, I promised we would, we would be responsible and not hold, it's again, it's a philosophical thing, and that, it's administrative, I always tell people, they're not bad, I mean, that's their job, their job is to look out as they see the best way to run the county. You know, they're looking at it through different eyes, but I'm looking at it through the taxpayer's eyes, and that's really all it is, it's a philosophical thing, and a philosophical point is that we don't keep balances at a high rate, like savings accounts, so, I made this analogy all the time, so if I keep putting away money for a trip around the world, right, in my, in my savings account, because it's, you know, I want to do it, and it's good, I want to, and then my air conditioning breaks down, I don't go knock on my neighbor's doors to give me money, I go into my savings account and take it for what I need it for, and then I start saving up again for my trip around the world, so, you know, that's where I'm coming from. And it took me a long time to even get the sales tax, and I think it's that important, and I think if we'd got that sales tax going, that we wouldn't have to worry, I think, with some restructure with the sheriff's department, I mean, all that over time, we'd be saving a bundle, I think we'd be, we'd be able to cover this shortfall if we did that sales tax, and so, that's why it's, it's hard for me to, you know, switch gears, because if there's a solution out there that's not on the backs of the property owners, you know, especially ones in Lake Havasu, I mean, everybody, before we even do anything, everyone's property taxes are going up. Forget about what the county... Forget about what the county does. Everybody has school districts. We've got the event center. There's overrides, there's fire bonds. The MCC went up. You know, everyone's going to be paying more taxes before this. So I just, you know, I just, I represent the taxpayers. And that's why I understand everything you're saying. And I think you do a great job. I do. Everywhere I go, I think the reason, and you're right, we are, I always say, we're the lowest tax. We've got a low property tax. And so we said like, that's a bad thing. It's why people come here. It's because we have such a, I think Bullhead City is like the one with the lowest costs of living. That's why people come here. And because we've been so fiscally conservative with our sales tax, we get to use it for something so important like this debt. It wasn't used frivolously. You know, somebody before asked about how the other counties and cities are taking care of it. It's not that they're just saying it's not important. They're freaking out. But they can't because they're at their max. They're at the max. Pima County is doing a 25 cent property tax. The most conservative supervisor I know is in Pima County. And she did it, the 25 cent, just because of this. It pains her to do it, but that's how important this, paying this debt before anything else is. So, yeah, I rambled, but that's just how I feel. It just makes me mad that we even have to go through this exercise.
If I could, just so we have some parameters, would it be permissible for me to make a preliminary motion before we get to the actual budget? And that motion would be that we direct staff to utilize fund balances to pay for all pension debt that we can do legally, which means they, Mr. Esplin and Coral Lloyd would have to go through and.
Before you make your motion, can we have the other supervisors?
Certainly. But I would say I want to separate that from the 2.25 cent issues and the budget as a whole. I think I know how that fund balance motion is going to go. So I don't want to wrap the two of them together. I would like to make them separate because I think, I think there's what we should be doing theoretically and what we have to do pragmatically. Those are two different issues.
Oh, you want to make the motion now?
Mr. Chairman, I move that as part of our tentative budget that we direct staff to utilize the fund balances to the extent legally possible to pay down the PSPRS and EORP pension debts.
Okay, I'll second that. It's part of the tentative budget.
Well, we're not voting on final budget yet. We've got to wait till August.
Right, but I don't know. I have to think about it.
Well, if you don't, have you seconded it or not? Because if you don't, it dies.
Okay, I'll second it.
All right. So.
Okay. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye, and those opposed?
Aye.
No.
And I will also say, yes. Let's take a look at, let's take a look at what's available. There may be only a million dollars available, but let's take a look at that million dollars.
Thank you.
I did not hear Supervisor Bishop vote.
I'm still waiting to understand the motion.
The motion is that we have some fund balances. Those fund balances are restricted in part and not restricted in part.
So are we looking at what's available, or are we?
What is legally available and to report back to us on it is part of the tentative budget.
I would support that if it's only bringing back a number for us to look at.
That's all we can do as part of the tentative budget. Can't vote on a final budget till August, I think. Is it August? August.
Okay, doesn't do any harm to look at it.
It's limited to the reduction of the.
Yes.
And those are legal funds that we can look at.
Funds that we could legally take, even if it's not necessarily a good idea. We will decide that as part of the preliminary budget and then the final budget.
Okay. Thank you. Supervisor Bishop?
Well, I am proud of Mojave County. The fact that we are not at the maximum, like most of the other 15 counties in Arizona, and unlike two other counties that have gone out and had to get a bank loan so that they can make payroll.
That's true.
In between their revenues coming in. And I would hate to see Mojave County get in the position where we have to go to an outside banking institute and ask for money. I think we've done a good job of being fiscally responsible. I think some of the programs that have been discussed here today, like the vehicle replacement fund and landfill monies and all these other funds, they're, the balances are there for a reason. And I'm not opposed to looking at those balances, like Supervisor Moss has put in the form of a motion. But I think that property taxes are probably the only thing that we can do to remedy our money situation unless we get a unanimous vote on the quarter cent sales tax. And a quarter cent sales tax is the max that we can go. So we can't go any higher than a quarter cent on sales tax. But if we don't get unanimous support, we lose that opportunity. That leaves only property taxes. And I don't like raising property taxes any more than Supervisor Angus does. In fact, I think it probably affects me a little bit more than it does her personally. But what else are you going to do, folks? Do you want us to go out to a bank and fill out a credit app and hope that we pass that credit app since we would have to show that we were responsible and had a revenue source to pay that money back? I don't relish the prospect of having to do that. So as much as I hate to raise property taxes, unless we can get a unanimous vote on sales tax, I would support a property tax. So it's up to you, Supervisor Johnson.
Ms. Lloyd, can you clarify an item for me? I believe the Arizona revised statutes require a definite revenue source for outside funding. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so the only way to get outside funding is not through property taxes. It would have to be designated through the quarter cent sales tax. Because I don't believe you can use the property tax as a revenue source.
You could use the property tax as a revenue source.
It is possible.
If you're going to borrow.
Thank you. Okay, we've gotten that far. Supervisor Johnson, can I have your input, please?
I think we're mixing, at least in my opinion, two different things. The debt that's owed on the PERS and the EORP is a separate issue. While it affects the county probably the biggest problem we have, I think that's something we can do for later time because nothing we can put into effect today unless it is property tax will pay that off. I think you can get by, while I don't like it, with the million two or whatever that we're getting as, using as a credit. We could delay, that payment would be taken care of this year. I think now we're just talking about the budget. And I'm happy with the way the budget was brought forward with the no changes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion that we adopt as a tentative budget, the property tax proposal presented by Ms. Lloyd, with the modifications that we have already voted on and passed regarding the fund balances. And secondly, and thirdly, that we increase the sheriff to 25 cents and we include 25 cents towards payment of pension debt.
Can I, because they're interrelated.
Yeah, that's too high.
In your motion for the. Do we want to hold back the funding for the courts and probation?
I think it's in the, what would you like to do with the court and probation?
Well, it would make sense to me if, because the sheriff, I don't think can institute $4 million of input in one year.
I should clarify my motion then, because to whatever extent he does not utilize those funds, those monies should be going to some other source to be determined by the Board of Supervisors at a later date. And my position would be the pension debt, but we can discuss that later.
Okay. And/or the court, the finishing of the court?
If that's what the board's desires are.
So I'm just saying that $4 million, he may not be able to spend logically in one year.
I don't think the sheriff could spend it logically in one year. On the other hand, if he does by some miracle make it happen, I would like to have 99 deputies on the street. And so I want to give him the opportunity. But if he doesn't, we can look at redirecting those funds to other purposes.
Great, thank you very much.
So I amend my motion to include 25 cents to the sheriff's department, up to 25 cents for the sheriff's department. But if not utilized, the balance can be directed to other purposes, whether it's pension debt, court, probation, whatever is the pleasure of the board.
So what is the total?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know that, maybe the attorney can give us a ruling, but I think on property tax, whatever the amount is that the board decides on, or if they decide they're going to increase, it just goes to the general fund and then during the budgeting process, because, you know, a new board or anybody else or next year, that money can be allotted anywhere. I don't think you can say, at least, I believe you can't say we're putting 25 cents and then we're giving it to the sheriff. Would that be correct, Mr. Esplin?
I don't know the answer to that.
I think what we're voting on is just for this year. What we do next year is subject to a separate vote.
And I would agree with that.
Yeah. Because I don't think we, I think Supervisor Johnson's right. We can't bind future boards on a property tax.
Right. And I would agree with that as well.
Does that clarify your question, Supervisor Johnson?
It does. And obviously, while I'm not supporting this, I worry that we're, the direction we're going in is taking care of one department where the sheriff came forward and brought his proposal and said he needs all this money. And I'm sure the county attorney and the clerk of the court and all the rest of the departments could come forward with initiatives saying they have to have it. I don't know that we had a, our auditors go through to, you know, to verify everything the sheriff said or, you know, all the immediate needs. But we're ignoring the rest of the county. And I think we're filling a gap that might lead to the other departments suffering. That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
If I could respond, Mr. Chairman? I agree with Supervisor Johnson that other departments may have other issues. But it's my perspective that we as a county have two primary obligations, three if you count the roads. But the two that we're talking about today is, one, paying our debts so we're not dead beats and declared insolvent. And two, law and order. And so that's what this is directed to. It's a tentative budget. It could change between now in July and now in August.
Sure.
So.
I have a question. The total amount is 66 cents?
75, I think.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, we have a limit, and Coral just gave me that. You know, we talked about the maximum that the county can raise property tax is 50 cents. So, and she just corrected that. It's 52 and then some change. So maximum that the, they just redid the calculation. So it's 52 cents is the maximum that we would be able to raise property tax.
Above and beyond the 25 cents, which is already allocated, or inclusive of?
No, inclusive, all inclusive of.
So 52 cents, so I have, so my motion wouldn't work at all?
No, sir.
Okay. Then I would say it this way. I would remove my motion language regarding the pension debt and go strictly with the sheriff's department.
So just to clarify, that would be the original 25 and then another 25, is that?
20 total, 25 total for the sheriff. So it would be a total of 45. And there's 5 cents left, or 7 cents left over, if I understand Ms. Lloyd's math.
Okay, I have a.
Supervisor Moss? I've been listening, really.
You're doing a great job. Any failures here on my part?
Maybe clarify your motion just a little bit.
I'm going to remake my motion. I'm going to make, before I do, before I resubmit my motion, I'm going to clarify with Ms. Lloyd to make sure the numbers are accurate. We can go to a maximum of 52 cents in the general fund. Is that correct?
Yes, do you want the exact amount?
No. It's 52 cents. This is tentative budget. So as a tentative budget, I would move that we accept the property tax proposal as presented today, increasing the tax rate for the sheriff's department to 25 cents. That's a 20 cent increase for a total of 40 cents, oh, excuse me, for a total of 45 cents. And that, and I'm doing it wrong, am I? Give me your opinion. Mr. Johnson, Mr. Watson, how about you make this motion?
No, I don't care to make the.
I'm usually the glib one, but internally, I'm like crying and screaming in rage.
Oh, I know.
It's locking me up.
I believe.
Watson, I have a question.
I believe 25 cents is, is the funding for me for the property tax.
It's our, 25 cents is already baked into this property tax proposal. We have 32 cents still available.
Then I believe you'd have 27 cents available.
That's correct, 27 cents. 27 cents.
27 cents available.
Can I ask something? Isn't, wasn't it 16 cents and then 10 cents for the library?
It's a separate taxing district.
Separate. I know, but it was only 16. When did it become 25 cents?
If, Mr. Chairman, may I clarify that? I think I've got it written down. What the property tax proposal was is 14 cents for the structural deficit of 2.5 million, 5 cents for the court project, which would accumulate 870,000 per year for a period of time, 1 cent for probation, and 5 cents for the sheriff's, which would go 870,000 for the sheriff. That was, that equated to 25 cent increase.
Okay. So what I'm going to propose to Ms. Lloyd's budget, her property tax proposal budget, is of the 27 cents remaining, okay. 25% of that will be directed to the sheriff's budget appropriation for new hires and other public safety issues. If not utilized, the board at the end of the year can redirect it to other sources. That the balance of 2 cents not be utilized, and that would make things very clear, I think.
And Supervisor Moss, one correction. I think just a verbal typo, you said percent, and you meant to say 25 cents.
Cents, cents, yes. I'll amend my motion to stretch the word percent and use the word cent.
So to get, may I interrupt? May I? Just to clarify for the math. Thank you, Chairman and Supervisor Moss. We've included 870,000 already.
See, there is 27 cents left. I was right, Mr. Watson.
So you would need 20 cents to get to the 25.
I remove my motion. I revoke my motion.
Okay.
I make a new motion that we accept your property tax proposal with the addition of an additional 20 cents to the sheriff's department for budget appropriations for public safety.
Okay.
Now you got it dead on.
Okay, thank you.
7 cents left.
I still have a question.
That's my first, that's my motion. Anyone can feel free to second it or not second it. I don't mind.
Supervisor Bishop?
This does not include any monies for the pension debt. Am I correct in that?
It does not. We could add the 7 cents back in, which would give us just around a million dollars a year towards the pension debt, which would be interest-only payments, if I understand how the math works out.
If we added that back in and then when we adopt the final budget, if we could get the quarter cent sales tax approved, which is doubtful, but if that was approved, then we could reduce the property tax?
Yeah. Okay, then I will do it this way. I am going to rescind my prior motion again. I'm going to go, I'm going to vote, move that we approve the property tax proposal submitted by Ms. Lloyd, changing, however, that we add an additional 20 cents in for the sheriff's department for appropriations for public safety, which would be a grand total of 25 cents, and 7 cents of the property tax towards pension debt payment.
Thank you, gone over.
No, 52, trust me.
That's good.
See, the engineer says I'm right.
Yeah, good. That puts us at our max.
Okay.
But it can be reduced if things go differently.
That's the tentative budget, is not the preliminary budget, is not the final budget. We can do anything we want in a downward direction between now and the preliminary budget and now and the final budget.
Okay. Super motion, thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Let me have a second. Any further questions, discussion, stomping? Supervisor Johnson? Anything to add?
Mr. Chair, I guess the only question I would have is, we're looking at, or the proposal before us is 25 or 30 cents that we will take in the general fund that will. proposal before us, is 25 or 30 cents that we will take in the general fund that will, that the board will use for the sheriff's department. How many people are in the sheriff's department that will be affected by this?
All of them, I think.
All, I would imagine.
But I mean, is that, what, what's a rough number?
I believe that to get...
People, 100?
I believe to get a rough or even a, uh, we'd have to get that from the sheriff himself. He's unavailable today. He's not at this meeting.
He's out of town.
He's out of town, uh, I think at a conference.
Uh, if I can try to, um, it's my intention...
But I mean, it's not, not 200 people, because we're not, we're not putting the corrections officers in, correct?
No. That's already part of the property tax budget under 1 cent that Ms. Lloyd presented, I believe.
We have the chief deputy here.
My, my understanding is that if, in an ideal world, if Sheriff Schuster could find the appropriate people, that he could utilize that roughly $4 million to solve his compression issue, both with on-the-street deputies and jail personnel and other employees, and hire, give or take, an additional 20 deputies and put them on the streets with vehicles and uniforms and all the rest of that. Maybe more, because he's working with volunteers and things of that nature. Um, so, we'll see.
I guess what my question was then, I mean, we're, or, uh, we're, it's for a discussion that we're looking at, um, increasing the property tax by that much to accommodate less than 150 people and we've got 1,000 employees that have the same compression problem.
I can appreciate your concern. The way I look at it is the influence of these dollars are spread over 205,000 people. Not just the department. But that's just my impression.
It's, I'm, I'm speaking as a representative of the unincorporated areas of Mojave County, which is, I think, 80 percent or more of my district. We have a shortage of law enforcement personnel. We have, in my opinion, more and more unsavory characters moving in there because they know there are areas of Mojave County which are occupied by tens of thousands of people, which, if they're having a good day, have two deputies on patrol. Um, it's, if I were a drug dealer, let's not hope I don't go that direction in life, that's exactly where I would want to locate because there's no law enforcement.
True. Thank you.
Chairman Watson, may I ask a question of Ms. Lloyd?
Sure, certainly.
Ms. Lloyd, if, if a miracle happens and we get unanimous support for the quarter cent sales tax, how much of a reduction can we make in the property taxes should we get support for what Supervisor Moss has made a motion on? So, in other words, when we come back, if we pass sales tax, how much can we then reduce property taxes?
Mr. Chairman, um, I left my calculator up, upstairs, but I think if you add the 2.5, 870, 174, 870, you know, and then, then an additional, uh, million, you're gonna be right up against the, uh, do you have a number for us?
Well, you'd be able to...
Less than the 6.5 that would be raised by the quarter cent sales tax, is that correct?
Yeah, the 6.5 million is equal to 38 cents of property tax.
Okay, thank you. So, it would be a little bit greater than the 6.5 million that we would be raising?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Does that make sense?
I'd like to clarify something for you, though.
Sure, but the point is, we could, if things went that direction, we could then lower property taxes. We wouldn't have to stick with the amount that we're approving today if that happens.
Well, it depends on how you allocate it. Because under the proposal that was discussed by the board so far, we were still gonna be short 700,000 because all of this was going to be allocated either to the sheriff or the PSPRS. So, we also had, um, included in the base budget, if you will, for the current year, we had the indigent, indigent defense capital case costs in there, as well as major maintenance, still unaccounted for. So, it would have to be changed in order to eliminate all of that.
All right. This has been an interesting dance. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify. I'm sorry. Let's take a roll call.
Has it been seconded yet?
Yes, we have a second.
Oh, thank you.
Supervisor Angus? Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Moss?
Yes.
And Chairman Watson?
Yes.
So, that's three to two. The motion will pass.
Motion has passed. Thank you very much. I believe that concludes.
Motion. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I, I have one question. I'm sorry. On the item, the final item also calls for a special meeting to be set. And that was not included in that, that motion, that portion of it.
I move that we set any special and public meetings that may be required to advance